Okay, where we left off was talking about the two areas of conservation. And now the next slide is demand management. Again, this is a citizen oriented, this is for the citizen and health and reducing their gallons per capita per day. The target goal set out by Regency is 140 gallons per capita per day. We average anywhere from 152 at our lowest to last year was 176. And that was in a pre severe drought water demand system. So our period is tight. So we're still on a low end of the scale. We are in a very low end of the scale. And this is a reachable goal for us. And if the citizens will conserve in their irrigation process in the future and the city continues to do their work as far as water production, both in plant and on land, we will reach it.
It's ours. I ran out of batteries.
Change their ways.
If we change their ways. Now, again, this is a conservation strategy. It's more long-term. It takes plenty of education and it takes some time to get there. Again, the strategy is provide the information, some educational process. We promote the water consciousness and making sure they understand what they're doing. There's all kinds of issues, how you use water in your home, wash full loads of dishes, full loads of clothes, those kind of things. Don't leave the water running, go outside, pick up the paper and then come back. Those kind of things.
Low flush toilets.
Low flush toilets, shower heads. There's all kinds of operations that you can do in your own home. But again, the primary increase in water is always irrigation in our community and most areas. Next slide. On the citizen oriented provide on water saving devices, we just mentioned those, doing some incentive. We had some water conservation kits back about 10 years ago that we gave out. And it was, there were little diet tablets you put in the toilet tank. If it turned your water in your toilet bowl red, did you have a leak coming in from the tank? Those kind of things. But we did offer those incentives for like low flush toilets and those kind of things. There are some state programs out there and we will look for those when they become available. But today's economy, I don't see the state putting any money towards that. Provide information regarding reuse. These are things like water barrels, using some of your landscape, changing your, where you can reuse your water or if someone talked about gray water yesterday or day before. And those are things that we can look at. Another strategy is non-promotional rates. Doing seasonal increasing block rates, we'll get into that in just a few moments, and annual increasing block rates. Basically having a rate that the more water used, the more you pay. And you have to base that off of your common demand, what your normal demand is. And that's usually for residential considered in the winter months. Similar to what we did on winter month averaging with our shore bill. Basically, very few people are irrigated during that time and they figure based slug. Supply management on the city. Again, the target goal with all combined efforts of the citizen and the city workforce, we should be able to hit this goal no problem, in my opinion. Water loss identification, control of unmeasured water, we talked about this before. There's water losses in plant and the distribution system. And then on those non-measured uses. Again, cooperation with all departments and those that use the water, mainly public services, fire and parks and leisure services. All of those departments are working and they understand where we are in particular conservation strategy. Meter replacements. We've been repairing meters or actually replacing meters for the last 10 or 12 meters. And those kind of errors of commercial, we went to automatic reeds, drive-by reeds, those things. And improving meter quality that we had, the type of measure down to about 5% of some of the meters in the past would, if you got 20% on what was actually flowing, we were about.
How far along are you on this program?
On meter replacement? We're continuing, it's on water basis and I would say every meter in the city probably been replaced in the last 10 years.
All of our large meters have been replaced, which were the ones where you could have the first loss. And then our residential meters, we're in year four of a concentrated program.
How long does a meter's life?
They can go 10 years, but you start seeing some efficiency loss in about 12 years.
Now, meter loss is normally based on the type of water that you send. If you send a well water that has some sand, chemical, you know, it's a dropout type chemical sand or some kind of lime, if you have a high lime scale system, that life shortens. But you can usually get 10, 20 years out of a good meter. Line replacement programs, council's been very good over the last 10, 15 years of that program. And we've actually produced a number of major water leaks that you had during the high stress periods or during those summer months because of the flow and the demand. And that continuation, that's what we were talking about before ago, is how to make sure that we keep the revenue stream there so that we continue replacement programs. Leak detection, again, those are, we do several different ways of doing that. We have sounding equipment that we can monitor. One of the problems we have here is airport traffic and trying to read and duck up against that information. Public education, talking about. And again, we'll go back to non-promotional rates, basically tiered rates. We do it either continually or through the season, like the April through the October timeframe. No discounts, so not giving any credits. We don't do that currently, but that's just one of the things we don't want to give up, some kind of global discount.
Did I understand you correctly? Leak detection has to do with airport?
What happens is...
The noise of the airport disrupts their ability to hear when they use these audio devices to try to detect leaks. Their microphone, that's what they have trouble hearing them. They're distinguishing them against the noise of the air.
Well, a lot of it is, you see the water, or you see a leak, you need to go to your...
So we'll talk about leak detection. What tools do we have to force private users to carry the leak to their property?
The veil. The veil is a way of them, but thank you for your... We ask them blatantly on the commercial side, there's Ferris and company, code enforcement, building enforcement, if they have a pilot that's leaking, for example, it's a non-measured product, they will go out and basically require them to fix that meter.
On the residential side, if you have ponding water or water that's going over sidewalks, you can get involved, code enforcement's there. Normally, the veil's enough to get them...
What about on commercial or irrigation?
Irrigation leaks? Again, if they are, if we're not in any kind of enforcement or stage area, it's mainly if they request to fix your leak from community belt and/or public service. There are ordinances related to water on streets and any freezing. Most of our irrigation systems have freeze protect or freeze guards on it that shut the system down or moisture sensors. Most of the big systems are going to...
It's in a private, private part of the system. All you can do really is actually do it.
The system's installed a permit and they have to be maintained in proper working conditions. So we have, we have the tool, we ask them, but if they blatantly say no, then the systems that are installed have to be installed and maintained. So we have that tool to clamp down on them, but most of the time, if we get involved and request them to fix a private system, they do it.
I think this is a palace issue, but I've ceased to be surprised over the years at how many times I see three things going on in the city irrigation. One is broken head geysers. Second one is tremendous runoff. And the third one is sprinklers running and raining.
Bob and I have that continuous conversation. And one thing that we are moving toward, we have a centralized control system now on all the irrigation. So it registers an increase in flow, it can shut the system down. We're about 90% up on that now, as far as the amount of irrigation systems that we have control.
It doesn't necessarily stop it with every head blow-off. If it has a major leak, like a line blowout, not just for a head. And the rain gauges, every system we have has a rain gauge on it, but typically it has to collect about an eighth of an inch or greater of rain before they shut off. They're not that sensitive that as soon as it rains, it cuts off.
We continue to work on runoff irrigation problems. And again, the type of plans that we have, Bob and I, we're all looking at how we will convert what we have in the ground, which is millions of dollars worth of that.
Yeah, converting some of those systems as well. There's a lot of runoffs, particularly in terms of spraying type of irrigation systems. And he's got some that are drip irrigation types for certain types of landscaping. He's got the, we call it the buried, the root irrigation for trees and things that is designed actually on the surface and be most, that's probably the most efficient way of doing it. In some places, he's got some challenges because, a favorite one that I see often is valid parkway at Bel Air. He's got real narrow noses on those landscape medians. And to try to control the irrigation within that nose is very difficult to do. Of course, the moral of that story is probably opt not to, here for a landscape, the noses when they're that narrow, use some sort of pattern, concrete or colored concrete material to decorate it, if you will. And say you're landscaping for a light area, it's controlled without the street. But those are some learning experiences that we've had over the last five, six years that are changing some of the design characteristics, as well as, Steve mentioned, planting different things.
Let me ask you one other question, and I'm thinking, for example, there was a geyser in the southeast corner of Memorial Park for months, and I called it in several times. Does anybody ever go out and inspect, you know, periodically inspect?
Every time we get a call, and I don't know where it was called in, typically we send somebody out right away to do it. And in some of the areas, even though we try to run through the system, we have to rely on reporting to know where it is. Irrigation runs typically during the late hours when the parks are closed. So it comes on 11:00 PM and it's off by 6:00 AM, and we don't have any crews out there. So the only way to look for these leaks when we don't have it reported, send a crew out and run through each station. And that's very time consuming, but then again, you get back to the water use when you do that. So we try to be very responsive to the reporting. Sometimes a call comes in and it's not very accurate as to the location and it may take a couple of calls to determine where it's at.
But that is one of our areas that we will address more and more as the realization of conservation comes into play. And again, with Regency moving the per capita from 150 in the old report five years ago to 140, we've got to do a better job of it.
Going back on the irrigation and the medians, there's limitations on what you can do with fields at parks because you've really got to try to maintain the turf and avoid cracking and spalling of the surface and people spraying in their ankles and that type of thing. Where council could probably help with this in the future would be when we have a median that's, we've got some roadway projects in progress right now. We have a median that we want to landscape in some fashion. We've taken various landscaping plans to council and preference always seems to be for kind of a heavily landscaped, kind of frankly, water intensive type of approach. We've shown some variations on that, but there hasn't been a whole lot of support for a more desert-y type landscape, more sparse approach. You know, there's occasional, when you look at the top hills, is it the Melbine?
Yeah, it looks very similar.
I think it's the one that's done primarily with sand durer materials or some...
Rock.
Sand durer, maybe sand durer, cactus and things like that. Historically, there's been a whole lot of excitement about that type of aesthetic versus the other type of aesthetic, which unfortunately, a lot of water. So that's just something for the future. We're a couple, we're talking about those two streets. Yeah, yeah. Just an example.
So more strategies coming up to play, again, water saving appliances, fixtures, a couple of that, rain barrels, we talked about that. We have a few in town, there's several, we have several master gardeners in town and they are promoting them. So reuse program, again, on residential, commercial, use of treated effluent. That is one thing that we have in place today. We sell treated effluent through the 20 regional water district. And they in turn sell that to castings as a customer for use of irrigation cost. Also treated effluent, a lot of our plant water that we use in the facilities itself, it's all washed down water, clean water, those things, produce treated effluent instead of using city water. There are other options that you, council has approved as far as along with our master plan and the utility side of doing the reuse program and placing the treated effluent back into Lake Louisville to obtain credit for that water and reducing the cost of raw water after purchase. And in coordination with Dallas, Regency, Dallas is our supplier and the contract advises that we have to follow suit when they do any kind of water stage program or water emergency management program. Current status, again, we were at 176 gallons per capita per day last year. Again, we're in good shape of reaching that goal in the future. Control of irrigation practices is the primary effort that we will be monitoring and working towards. And the citizens will do that as well. And our education programs will be ahead of place. Our emergency water management plan, throughout the contingency plan, a quick response and action. In this particular case, this is the short term. This is immediate need. Mr. King can, well, actually what would happen, this passenger, director of public services would contact us and advise that there is an emergency situation, whether it be on the distribution side of inability to pump the water and keep the water through the system, or a drought, or the supply. Something happened with the supply line, it would be killed out. It's a quick response, quick action, quick notification. And those are, again, the areas that you see there is A through E that would cause that system to be implemented. Again, our water management plan, we continue the education. Our possibility of activation is a quick notice, basically can be issued within the hour. We begin notification to pay newspapers, through our media, Facebook, all of those electronic areas that we have in notification to the public, just a general warning. We also, one time, this has been several years ago, I had both fire and police departments, public service employees, we had a system failure. And each of the departments were out on the street with notification to the public to reduce their water consumption. This was in the summer, in an August timeframe, and we did get through the system, through that particular situation very well. But it took all of the departments to help us get there. And again, regulating the water use through voluntary mandatory action. Currently, we're under stage one, which we continue to be in stage one throughout any year and just trying to request that the citizen wash their water needs and water on those garbage days that their garbage is collected and not on Sunday.
Yes, question. Being in Regency, I'm not sure what that encompasses, but if another city in Regency goes to stage three as an example, does that mean that we have to also go to stage three, but it's not one?
Notion. The only group we're controlling from is the city of Dallas through our contract. It's stayed, we have to follow the same suit with Dallas because they're our water supplier. Any other BMW, U N city, any W U city. There's 18 cities in the metropolitan receives water in Dallas. And basically, that's a, there are a few cities that are a little bit different on that because Dallas's water consumption is higher. And what they're trying to do in their stages is do a 5% reduction on each stage. And we're far below them, so we kind of have some latitude in not moving to a mandatory stage. When they go to a mandatory stage until a few months later. Now, I'll get into that in just a few moments, but that, basically, we just have to follow Dallas.
You have to keep in mind that regionally, there's a lot of supply sources and a lot of different reasons for a city or a supplier to request customers to go to a different stage of emergency water management. One of the most frequently, frequent problems is a disruption of the distribution system. We have a large pipeline that bursts. A lot of cities will go almost immediately to stage three or four to try to conserve the water until that line gets repaired and then they drop back immediately to a lesser stage. Other reasons might be disruptions in supply source. And this is what we're seeing right now out in the North Texas utility district cities, which are Plano and Crisco and Allen and some of those northeastern and Collin County cities. They've had difficulty, which you probably have read about, with their supply, which is Lake Levon and then secondarily, Lake Texoma via one of the creek feeders to Lake Levon. They have had to shut off the flow from Lake Texoma due to the zebra muscle problem. And simultaneously, they had drought and Lake Levon, as we've seen pictures of it, what it looks like today. So they're at an advanced stage and thinking about going to another stage of drought management. But that's their system that's affected in that way. We're affected by the drought and not by some of those other issues. So we pretty much follow whatever Dallas does.
And then remember, their stages are generally hard in our emergency water management program on the conservation side of this presentation. Again, increase from stage one is a voluntary. Stage one is voluntary, stage two in our system becomes mandatory. It's all the same items identified in stage one, but those restrictions move from a voluntary restriction to a mandatory restriction. I anticipate, Carol and I talked about this many months, that in Dallas implemented stage one, in Dallas, stage one is mandatory on their irrigation system. We anticipate by April, Dallas will recommend that we go to our stage two or mandatory.
Why don't everybody have the same stage? I bet it's logical.
Irving does that, but there's your problem. You're trying to make it live.
Yeah, I know, but if the media is going to say stage one, and so Louisville's voluntary, but Dallas is mandatory, and I'm sure, what does two mean for Dallas?
Two is water here mandatory.
But Louisville's mandatory, less than that.
The short answer is local control. They don't want to impose that. Now, you could certainly, you could, as a council, adopt one that matches Dallas.
Yeah, word for word.
That would not be a problem from mandatory standpoint. But there might be some things in there that you might not want to jump to quite as quickly as some other city might want to jump to in terms of some of those mandatory requirements or procedures. So that's the local control that results in...
What that council does is that they have the lakes to think about, and stage two or three for them is percent depletion of the lake. Well, we don't deal with that. Ours is just a matter of control of the uses that we have. If 5% for them would put us into a financial issue if we were to do that. That's...
I'm just talking about to get consumer...
Understanding.
Right. Because right now, if it ever comes out that the numbers don't mean anything for one city to the next, does that make sense?
One reason that we had looked at this about 10 years ago was nobody had a voluntary program. Nobody went out consistently, year-round, saying, you need to do this, you need to do this. I think our citizens are more aware that we've sent out notices, water mills, et cetera, water only on the day of office. It's voluntary and send that upfront. We feel, you know, and again, this is from staff only, is that it gives us the educational tool that Dallas didn't have. They would stay one and it was the 13th citizen got...
So were we on Dallas's deal, would we be at stage zero?
Yeah.
You'd have something like that?
Right.
Okay.
Zero.
And also, it's troubling to see NTT, North Texas, Minnesota, coming out of the drought deal and all that. But it's primarily, their problem is the muscles, which...
It's more than that, like one...
It's the reservoir levels. Yeah, because they're using all the water in Lake Levon because they're not getting it from Texoma.
Yeah, but they've also drained down Chaplain so far that it's...
For the same reason, that's what I'm talking about. There is a problem, nobody's denying it.
Chaplain's in Dallas.
Chaplain's... Chaplain's... What? They could take over, they're super massive.
Just two thoughts here. One is that, and you can tell me if I want, but I think I've heard, it's surprising how well citizens in Louisville have responded to voluntary measures.
Don't disagree with it. I don't disagree with the voluntary deal, but when it comes out that you're in level one, people in Louisville are going to say, well, okay, it's voluntary. But in Dallas, it's not voluntary. In Irving, it may be something else. In Plano, it's a whole different deal because of the North Texas...
Here's the flip side of that coin is you force us into lockstep with Dallas.
Dallas controls the water.
Dallas does control the water, but we get to set our... You put us in lockstep with Dallas and stop and think, Dallas' average per capita usage is much higher than ours.
Mainly because we're...
We don't use as much water per person.
I don't disagree, but we're all in the same boat. It was better than...
Well, we're in the shower, we're in the boat.
When they cut it off, we're at it. And we could do like Flyer Man did a few years ago. Their solution was to double the amount of water going through the lines.
The other thing you kind of have to keep in mind on that is having the stages is one thing, enforcing the stages is another. And especially when you get into mandatory requirements, that certainly implies a level of enforcement, but that level of enforcement can vary dramatically. It's not spelled out in any of the plans for many of the cities. So that's one of those areas that you want to have some degree of control over and you don't necessarily want to do everything that everybody else is doing.
Well, you're going to have somebody that's not going to do anything. But they're in this, you know, they're using, they keep their same consumption up, everybody else is trying to do something because of the total good that comes out of a voluntary program or a mandatory program that one city says is not doing.
Ideally, everybody would have the same day consumption, everybody would have the same water conservation and water management policies, everybody would have the same dry emergency management policies, but it's just, there's a lot of variables in that.
Maybe in cities, what had stood is, what was it about five years ago when we had this problem last? I believe it was about five, six years ago when Plano, well, cities around us, I'm village, I'm in Plano, Crisco, all went to big mandatory watering restrictions. We never did, the reason was Dallas did, my reason is we're tied to Dallas, they didn't. But their problem, if I remember correctly, as you told me, was the problem was their distribution system was not, could not keep up with the demand. It wasn't a supply problem back then, it was a distribution problem.
Both that and the fact that they might have had gallon per capita consumption levels of 220, 230 gallons a day, or ours was already 160, 165.
areas that you want to have some degree of control over, and you don't necessarily want to do everything that everybody else is doing.
Well, you're going to have somebody that's not going to do anything, but they're in this, you know, they're using, they keep their tank consumption up, everybody else is trying to do something, because the total good that comes out of a voluntary program, or a mandatory program, one city says not to.
Ideally, everybody would have the same rate consumption, everybody would have the same water conservation and water management policies, everybody would have the same drought emergency management policies, it's just a lot of variables.
In, in cities, what had stood in, what was about five years ago, we had this problem last, I think it was, I believe it was about five, six years ago, when Plano, well, cities around us, I'm village, Flarama, Plano, Kitty, Frisco, all went to big mandatory watering restrictions. We never did, the reason was, is Dallas didn't, like, we're tied to Dallas, they didn't, but their problem, if I remember correctly, you mentioned, you told me what the problem was, their distribution system was not, could not keep up with the demand. It wasn't a supply problem back then, it was a distribution problem.
Both that and, and the fact that they might have had gallon per capita consumption levels of two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty gallons a day, or ours was already a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-five.
Right.
It's like, when they get down to a hundred and sixty-five, then we're uneven scales, so until they get down there, why do we even enforce the same measures on our citizens?
Well, right, what I'm saying was, though, with the distribution, they were having problems getting the distribution of water, they had the water, but they couldn't get, keep it distributed, keep their tanks full. We, as, as I pointed out earlier, they had, in the first part of the deal, our distribution system, we still got seven, well, was it nine?
Thirty-eight, yeah, about nine.
About nine M D D we could do with our despite, I mean, our distribution system. We can do that much additional, it's just the supply now that's what's caused our problem. And to answer Councilman Jones's question about what happened in Dallas, is the next stage, what happens is, they begin restricting their commercial, down to volume usage, actually, businesses can be reduced on the amount of water they use, and, and I don't know if they've ever pulled that trigger to stage three, in their case, and how that affects following companies, people that use water. I do not know how that's going to, how they will affect.
So if and when the zebra mussels make it into Lake Louisville, aside from getting tasty seafood straight from the tap, what, what happens? I, I know it destroys our, our water plant, or can tear it up, I know it wipes out sport fishing.
You kill them before you give them, and that, that is through basically chlorine, it's chlorine injection and then a removal. That's pretty much what happened with, well, Texas, they had managed to take care of it, they opted not to do it, and so they contaminated the lake. So they clean the system up.
And they're building one right now.
They're building what, they're building the pipeline right now, so that they can take the water from Tetsoma, chlorinate it, kill the organisms, kill the mussels, and they put it in system. So it is a, it is a treatable process, but the problem is, once you get it in the lake, how do you chlorinate the lake?
I was going to say, we're going to see the ads with boats with those chlor taps, throw them out.
See, that's a little problem, you don't.
That's the other issue, the core, is, there was a deal yesterday, they were talking about mandatory wash stations for every boat that comes out, and every place a boat can come in or out, and they would be mandatory wash, and they would be a feed to and all that. Our shut the lakes down, this core wasn't doing anything.
There are those, there are those places in Arkansas and Oklahoma that always have those stations, they warn you not to step out of the river without washing the leaves or into boats and everything else, yeah.
We pre-chlorinate our water once it's in our pipeline or before it comes to our plant, but pre-chlorinate it so that it doesn't get any.
This is one of the things, really, that crossed my mind, I think a lot of Louisville citizens don't even know that we buy our water from Dallas Water Company, they think we have water rights in Lake Louisville, and, you know, we know our water system, and all the water comes from our treatment.
Those people don't know.
They don't link us to Dallas.
Well, oh, oh, wait a second, most people read the Dallas Morning News and watch the TV stations on Dallas, and, and that's where they get their news, they don't get it from the Louisville paper, they don't even throw it in my neighborhood.
I get it, because they hear Plano's doing this, Irving's doing that, Dallas is doing so-and-so, and the conclusion is, every city is running some show.
But, but they're not, that's my whole deal. They're not running their whole show. We're getting water from Dallas, but let's just go, yeah, let's move on.
Okay, Kirk, continuing on with current status, again, lake levels were dropping as we go to this and now, and I reckon a few do. However, understanding that this is, this is a highly issued trying to reduce our concentrate of our gallons per capita per day and conservation level, but again, we were full at this time last year going into a drought, and we dropped six or eight feet in the lake, so it can happen in the summer, and weather forecasters are predicting that this drought will continue, even though we did do a good, nice rain several weeks ago. We did reach our subscribe capacity, I need to explain this, we have twenty million gallons capacity at the water treatment plant. We have thirty-four million gallons of treated water that we subscribe to, or that we, we have the ability to use. We purchased that product years and years ago, at very low cost, but we only pay for what we use, okay? So we have this amount of water, but we're only using nine million gallons of treated water. So without increasing that nine million gallons, ten million gallons, that's where I'm saying we reached our capacity, we pump nine from the treated water side, and we pump twenty from the plants, we have twenty-nine million gallons, and that's what we have today. We have more water to fill up, but again, that is where it costs when we go up on treated water, it's two hundred thousand gallons, or two hundred thousand dollars per M D D.
And Steve says we pay for what we use because that's our policy. If you were to get into a situation where you had to bump your treated water up from nine to twenty-nine in one summer, it might be very difficult to use or to pay, or to use, pay for what we use. We'd be, we'd basically be escalating our demand charge to the point where we couldn't get that much water, we couldn't get that much water out to the customer base, they didn't, they don't need that much water in the winter, so we'd be paying for water that we don't use. So what is the challenge, Carol's challenge, is always to maximize the current demand from the treated water side at whatever threshold we've hit in the past, that's, that number nine today, probably go up to ten next year would be my guess, and throughout the year, use that nine routinely, every single day, they use that nine, and then they think more they need, they get from the plant. And then next year, if we have to go to ten, then we'll use that ten every day, if whatever else we get from the plant. What you don't want to do, and this is why irrigation control is so important, is to be forced into a situation where you have to go from nine to some bigger number, that you then can't use during the rest of the year.
You don't have, you don't have the population to cover that on a normal day. So again, without irrigation reduction, additional treated water, will we require this, not if, it's, will we, we can't, probably. Dallas and other area cities, again, are mandatory restricted due to this consumption. We must follow the Dallas Restriction of Discretion Convention, and again, kind of weird, but we, we remain at stage one on the voluntary, just because of where we are on the usage. Our consumption, again, is less, and allows the state during all peak periods, and once I get into that peak period, Dallas is going to ask me to go up to a mandatory stage. Voluntary requests, again, these are what we do today on voluntary, educate, notify customers through all our communication tools, and basically, the most common thing, wash your water needs, wash your water uses, and control your irrigation on your garbage collection that is going, and not on Sunday. By doing that, during the summer months, we were able to meet our people.
If we were to take the position to add a element to the education part, as far as, you know, things you do in the house, would it take some of the pressure off of this outside irrigation issue?
My personal opinion, no. We, we educate, we, we have brochures out that says, you know, it's kind of splatter items, do not leave the water on while you're brushing your teeth, do not, you know, leave your shower on if you're not in the shower, do not wash, you know, dishes and clothes without full load, those kinds of things, the use of water conservation devices.
The irrigation demand is so substantial during the summer, it's literally twice normal demand, so you can do all kinds of stuff for a normal demand, it's not going to approach that, what we use for irrigation is the problem.
That's two hundred gallons, that's per day, that two hundred thousand, if we bump it up, it's two hundred thousand per day.
No, per day.
That's annual.
They can call it two hundred thousand. These are suggested reductions, what you just talked about there. Pool drain, we tried to eliminate during the, during the summer months, and then refilling most pools, most pool owners do not do that, they'll add what they need to evaporate, and so, tried to. Prevention runoff, if this is not runoff to, you know, for storm water, this is from irrigation, it's running across the sidewalk that you mentioned a few moments ago, and also production, major issue of landscape water. City use, we try to do, and that is, we, we have reduced street washing in the past, and mainly a budgetary issue on the general fund side, controlling our costs, but, street washing does not consume a lot of water, but it does have some vehicle washing. If we go into the next stage, we will enforce that, but most of the time, we still out, we want our vehicles looking good during stage one.
Yeah, all this stuff is voluntary, it's all kind of feel-good, it's, it's controlled things to some extent, but not to any great extent, it's a bit of that.
We didn't cut off our own, no balance, about still.
How much does that mean, or is it all recirculated, dude?
It's recirculated, yes, all of our, all of those.
A lot of it's, again, it's your name, what's in for you.
Put it here. So stage two comes along.
Now, stage two, next slide.
Stage two, those items that were suggested, recommended, good ideas, now become mandatory. Balance is shut off, the irrigation requirements for residential, commercial, golf courses and nurseries are now mandatory, and they have certain days that they are able to irrigate, for example, nurseries, nursery stock, there's certain days and times, certain time limits listed when you can irrigate. And then we have our enforcement programs, folks from T V and public service, that will build a vehicle washing facility, except for commercial car washes.
Are you just going to stage three?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the golf course is not excluded?
The golf course, if they were using that water, this is just the way our ordinance reads, they use lake waters, and Dallas, in stage two, I believe is already notified, golf courses, the staff, they use the water, because they're in stage two, they buy water, so that's several.
That's all, they're using merchandise to disturb them.
But we have several merchants.
He'll be thinking.
Vehicle wash, this is stage three, everything that was in stage two is now goes to a next degree of enforcement, and it's really an enforcement issue. We prohibited washing, except for commercial car washes, now we're related to specific days that you can get your car washed, and it's either Wednesday, Friday, or Wednesday, Friday, from the, from the time in the morning to the time in the hour of the afternoon, it shuts down. Commercial users, reduce consumption by specified amount. This, Carol would look at what she needs to meet the goals, and, and give the requirements that we would need, we'd bring that back to Mr. King, and then present that to you for a percentage decrease in commercial use, you know, that could be for not only irrigation, but a total of water consumption reduction, or percentage reduction. All of it. And then all landscape waters produced, except for nursery plant stock and golf courses, again, just doesn't apply to our golf courses, but nursery stock, new plantings, have a specific time and date, and then those are actually reduced from stage two.
So we don't have a step between two and three as far as landscape watering, or example, stage two, I believe, is two days a week, one of your days, garbage picked up, correct?
Between seven times.
Is that what we get?
Correct.
Twenty-seven hours, I have. And.
Back to the slide.
So then, if you go to stage three, you, you don't have a step rate, you go to one day a week? Stage three is just no water.
No water. And if we have new, new structures, if we have new buildings, they're issued building permits, there will be exemptions there where they will not be required to put landscape in until after we get out of the restrictions, so there are, there are some adjustments there.
So this is the stage right here, that we anticipate that will be required of our contract with Dallas to go to sometime this spring. This gets into the mandatory enforcement, theoretically, of those watering restrictions on the se residential, and so people are supposed to water only on their trash day, and only during the hours prescribed by the state. The, the problem is always that third bullet, enforcement of restrictions, how far do we go in enforcing that? Under the ordinance, we can issue tickets, we can try to find someone that we think is responsible for doing that, catch them to come out and turn their water on or whatever, and stop them on the front lawn and hand them a pink slip. Historically, I don't recall having ever done that, maybe we did a little of it one time, but I don't recall.
We've done warning citations. We've done warning citations.
Yeah.
Warning citations.
Which we'll do again, and we'll always start with that, but there's a lot of issues associated with that, not least of which is who's going to do it, I don't need the police department running around doing that. The public services staff is busy doing their regular business, Eric's staff are busy doing their regular business, and so enforcement becomes a bit of a sticky widget, and so that's just F Y high from your standpoint, it's not anything that we would have a major crackdown on, we'd probably gradually ramp up and gradually do more and more and more of it as we, as we needed to, and there's going to be inconsistencies, some guys are going to say, well, what about that guy down the street? I saw him water, and, and it'll be all that kind of stuff that goes on when you try to enforce it on anybody. So, again, that's just educational on your part, because it's, it's one of the tougher things that we're exposed to in this more mandatory.
And as far as the restrictions, I'll make you aware of that, there are more details in the ordinance, I just picked out a few that highlight most offensive issues, so there are issues when you can irrigate your foundation, or use sucker hose on the foundation, et cetera, there's, there's a lot of that.
In the ordinance.
In the ordinance. We talked about how this would work, Carol recalled Mr. King, and he issued the order, he was making public announcements through all types of different medias, and for your information, there is, there are variances in special needs authorization by administration, and there's a particular issue that there, Mr. King has that ability in their ordinance to grant those variants. Duration of the emergency, the initial emergency stage is up to sixty days, which can implement, we must bring that back if we wish to extend that, with your approval as counsel, and again, as Mr. King indicated, enforcement is, is one issue, we hope that the citizens comply, we work the warning citations first, actually verbal warnings first, then a written citation, and then move there, and how we implement that, we've got twenty-six square miles of populated area that we would have to try to monitor in enforcement.
We, if we end up having to do this, and we have minutes left on our code red, if we haven't, we've got to do most of the springy red, you, I think it might be a benefit for us to use the code red to notify all our citizens, and give them, quick, I mean, it's going to be quick, but the quick detail, that place that we're doing this because Dallas mandates, our supplier, Gulf Water, Dallas mandates, we go to this.
Blue, red, cable.
Right, I knew we'd do the cable.
Social media, we'll, we'll use it all.
It's over red. On the cable, can that go to file this too?
Yes, yes.
And the fact. They, the fines are five hundred dollars, not more than five hundred dollars for each fence, each fence is, per day, there's a new offense after each day, if the person wants to continue to give off his.